Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, July 16, 2018. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Okay. Albertson.
Here.
Bueller.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Lallum.
Here.
Manti.
Here.
Roby.
Here.
Solom.
Here.
Thorson, absent. Billhauer.
Here.
Y.
Present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. And before I look for a motion, I would like to recommend we remove item number 1C from the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
No move.
Moved by Councilwoman Manti and seconded by Councilwoman Y. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number two is public comment. And this is the time set aside for citizens who would like to speak on a topic which is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to do so? See none, we'll move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda. And I have several changes to make. First of all, I would like to remove items 11 and 12. And I'm looking for the sewer bid. Where's, which one is that?
That was 1C.
It was 1C.
Oh, that was 1C. Already did that one. Never mind. Okay, so we're going to add item 21C. Authorization for the mayor to sign a mosquito control grant to the old business agenda. And remove items 11 and 12, which have to do with the Mansell addition. They requested that those items be removed from the agenda. Are there any other changes? Is there a motion to approve the revised agenda? Moved by Councilman Solom, seconded by Councilman Albertson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointment of Dr. Jerry Reiber to the airport board. And we're very fortunate to have Dr. Reiber as a willing participant on that board. And I asked him his address and noticed that he lived outside the city limits. So I looked up. Technically, I cannot appoint anyone outside the city limits to the airport board. But it has been done in the past, so a precedent has been set. There's currently one member of the airport board that's been on there for a number of years who also lives outside the city limits. So what I'm going to do is ask for, I'm going to go ahead and recommend Dr. Reiber to be appointed to the board and ask that you revise the ordinance to include not just that a person be a city resident, but someone who also could possibly serve because they have a stake in the community. And I tried to figure out how to say that. So I'm saying either owns property in the city limits or has a job in the city limits. Whatever you would see fit. But I think that we have a regional airport and to only have people who reside within the city limits serving on that regional airport's board is wrong. So, Councilman Solom.
Can we just follow the policy that we have for city employees?
We could do that. That sets a distance from
What is that policy?
From the airport, actually. Thirty-five miles. We could do that.
Thirty-five miles, what?
So, someone living outside wouldn't necessarily have any tie to Watertown. I guess that, you could review that at the time that an appointment was recommended. So, and the ordinance has to come before you. I don't anticipate that the board would be taking any action in the near future. So it really isn't a pressing need right now. But Dr. Reiber's been coming to the board meetings and already been serving, so appreciate that. So, is there a motion?
No move.
So, Mayor, we just, we're approving him outside of what the ordinance language is. And then we're going to, someone's going to look at revising the ordinance. And that'll come back to us later.
Probably that guy over there with the attorney tie on.
Okay, that's, okay.
Councilman Roby.
All in favor of doing this, can we do it in that order?
Yeah.
I'm in favor of this, can we do it in that order, though? Don't we have to change the ordinance first?
As the mayor mentioned, there's already somebody, there has been somebody on the board that's been serving outside of the community. As long as there's no actions to be taken in the near future that could potentially be invalidated because there was an illegal member on the board, I don't see an issue with this, as long as we get it taken care of in the next month or two.
Maybe he'll recuse himself if that happens.
Mayor, this is purely an advisory board anyway, right?
Well, not totally. They have, it's a board that has powers described in our ordinance. They do make recommendations to the council, but they also are authorized to spend money by ordinance. Not all that they necessarily have spent money without taking it through the council. I guess that would be a question for the attorney, but we can look at that when we're reviewing the, or revising the ordinance. All right, any more discussion? Councilman Billhauer?
This doesn't relate to Dr. Reiber's appointment, but we've had, this is the second one we've added now, and Byron Kalis got off. Did somebody else get off? Are we expanding the board by one?
Yes. Joey Snyder has stepped down. So, thank you for pointing that out. Joey's term wasn't up, but he did step down, so I'm replacing him with, with Dr. Reiber. Thank you for bringing that up. All right. So we have a motion, a second? Did you have a question, Councilman Albertson? Oh, okay. Okay. And now I don't remember, so. We had Albertson. And who seconded it?
I did.
I thought Councilman Solom. Got that, Kristen? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Reiber. Okay, the next item on the agenda is acknowledgement of volunteer service provided by community members to beautify the roundabout. And there are a couple pictures, if you could bring those up. They're in the file, the little file symbol. I think you need to go to the file. This is a roundabout one. Did you click on the file one? They are in G. Did someone log out? Oh. Okay. It was loaded up, and here comes Brandy. Hopefully, she didn't have too much on there. It got logged out, Brandy, so you might have to... Anyway, I will go ahead and just thank the volunteers who have done this. I drove by the roundabout recently and noticed that it's very beautiful. And I knew that there were volunteers weeding it, and it's a lot of hard work. And I have some pictures of that. The plantings in the roundabout were done at no cost to the city last year. And there were the Game Fish and Parks, the Watertown Community Foundation, and the Cottington Conservation District, all supplied funds and labor and plants for native plantings. And trying to think of the name of what you call that, Mary, help me, the type of plants that were put in there to, pollinators, pollinator plants. Thank you, Brandy. These are some of the pictures. A lot of people worked to make the roundabout beautiful. And I did see some comments on social media about, why don't we plant the roundabout with something? It's just a bunch of weeds. Well, and I knew at that time that it had been planted with native pollinators, and it kind of made me sad. Now it looks fantastic. And it, you know, it takes a while before those things take root, and it also takes a lot of work. And this was at no cost to the public. And I want to say a few names. Barb Strewey asked the question, is it okay for citizens to weed the roundabout? She asked Mary Daly of the Upper Big Sioux Watershed Project. And there were a group of people, including Paula Davis, Jean Flaherty, Paulette Cotton, Joan McCarthy, Skylar Bender, and also John Larson and Mark Carsten, and Mary Daly and Roger Foot from the Upper Big Sioux Watershed Project. And these folks put effort forth to make our community beautiful. And this is just one thing that people do. We also have volunteers that have planted and maintained the plantings in numerous other parks, including Lori's Garden downtown. I think Jan Johnson does that. And also Kathy DeCarlo, Sixth Street Circle behind the Elks. Joan McCarthy and others in that neighborhood have put forward, Beth Manti, that's her neighborhood. A lot of people have worked hard in the zoo. There's a park where volunteers come in, including Darlene Gilman. We have volunteers throughout our community working very hard, and they aren't being paid, and they're not getting a lot of recognition. So I just want to take this time to thank those volunteers. It's really volunteers that make our community look great. And it takes a lot, we can't afford to pay them for all this stuff. It's just wonderful that they're willing to step forward and do this. So, Council, will you give them a hand? Thank you. All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you very much. It helps make our city just come together, and it's great to have that volunteerism. And maybe we could, I don't know, Highway 81, the flowers, some of that looks good. Some of that doesn't look, the weeds are taller than the flowers, and that's, it's an embarrassment. Maybe we invite, if they have some extra time, maybe we could get them on the flowers on 81.
Volunteers interested.
But Or get more volunteers, some Girl Scouts, some Boy Scouts. But
Yes, I know the Park Department would really appreciate that, too, because it kind of falls on them. And in the past, I think that property owners did do a lot more of the maintenance and planting along Highway 81.
I know someone added some lilies or something in one portion, and that looks really, really nice there.
They can still do that, but still available for them to help with. And so I'm going to move on. There's another announcement I would like to make. Item number six is the announcement of the receipt of the distinguished budget presentation award to the City of Watertown Finance Department. And it took several meetings of agendas going by without this being on there because we have a very modest finance officer, Kristen Bobzine, who actually puts the agenda together as well as the budget presentation. And she does a fantastic job. The Finance Department has gotten this award many years, but it's, I don't want to diminish this. This is awesome that we got this award, and it's largely because of Kristen's work. So we need to thank Kristen and honor her for getting this prestigious award for our community. So let's thank Kristen. Yes. All right, item number six, oops, that was item number six. Item number seven is election of council officers. And this is your gig and council members, so you need to nominate somebody for president, and Kristen will help you with the little ballot pieces of paper, so. Does anyone want to make a nomination?
I'll nominate Bruce for president, and one at a time?
Yes. We do president first. Are there other nominations for president?
I can nominate Glenn Billhauer for president.
I nominate Beth Manti.
Any other nominations? Okay, you each get one vote. Write the name of your choice. And Kristen, you want to hand them down, or do you want to come get them?
I actually, yep, I left the papers. I will come and get them once everybody's.
Then do we have to have
Yep, the scratch paper.
Do we have to have five voting for one?
Six.
Six.
Six. There's nine here.
Six.
Okay. Last year, this took a long time because I can't break a tie. I just have to sit here and wait.
Okay, council president is Glenn Billhauer.
Okay. Congratulations. Okay, the next item on the agenda is council vice president. So I would entertain nominations.
I nominate Bruce Bueller.
You have a nomination for Bruce Bueller. Are there others? Going once? Going twice? Gone? Okay.
I would make a motion to nomination cease and cast unanimous ballot for Bruce.
We have a motion by Councilman Albertson. You want a second? A second, a second by Y? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, we have reverse rolls.
He was voted on.
I guess.
He won.
It doesn't really matter. I can switch these seats up now because we're not separate boards. But I would like president and vice president next to me. I think it's fine.
Two reasons, one, I'm deaf in my left ear.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. You stay there. I don't want to bump hands. Okay, the next item on the agenda is number eight, application for special retail malt beverage and wine license to Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce from 2:00 PM on Thursday, July 19, 2018, until 12:00 PM on Sunday, July 22, 2018, at Stokes Thomas City Park. And this is, of course, for cooking on Compeska Days. And I'm going to look for a motion first, and then I'll open the public hearing. So is there a motion for approval? Moved by Councilwoman Manti and seconded by Councilman Billhauer. And I would now like to open the public hearing and see if anyone is here to speak on this topic. If so, please come forward, state your name in the microphone. See none, I will close the public hearing. Kristen, do you want to say anything about this?
This is just pretty straightforward, same as we've done in the previous years. This will be, of course, for cooking on Compeska, so. They extended the time just a little bit, and I think that was, they wanted to allow for, if they're doing any type of cleanup and whatever, so it's understood that they're covered.
Thursday Night Live is happening at City Park this week, just ahead of Cooking on Compeska, so that kind of extends it out and includes it. So, Councilman Roby?
I'll be recusing myself from this item.
Okay, Councilman Billhauer?
I've got a question. This is Stokes Thomas City Park. Does this mean the entire park? I mean, I know that, that they've reserved the entire park for cooking on Compeska this year. I mean, I know there was some discussion last year, there's the Beer Garden, and then there's also the line where you can taste the barbecue, and you can get a beverage there. I mean, does this encompass all those areas? I'm all in favor of this. I just want to make sure that we understand what area we're, we're including.
I think it's the same portion as the previous years. Mayor, was there not the rezoning that was done for this time? And it was like for a five-year
Yes.
span, every time, for five years, it's a certain portion that's zoned just for this purpose, kind of?
Right, and there is a legal description of it. We don't have a drawing. But, yeah, probably the same areas that it has been in the past. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is consideration of a lease agreement with Chris Hampton to hay Lot 1 and a portion of Lot 9 of the Hampton Industrial Park addition. So look for a motion second for approval. Moved by Councilman Lallum. Seconded by Councilman Roby. Matt, you want to tell us about this a little bit?
Sure, Mayor, thanks. This is a continuation of an agreement that has been going on for the last two years for Chris Hampton to hay two chunks of land south, let's see here, be southwest of Glacier Lakes Energy area, two lots. The only difference this year is that this, this lease will continue until, until we terminate. The last two leases, we had to, that's why we're doing this again this year, is because it ended after a year. So this is an automatic renewal until termination. And he also does have to, he will have to vacate the premises if it's sold.
Was this one that had the limitation on people using? Oh, there it is. Item 5E includes lessee, agrees to allow the general public to access the leased premises for the purpose of training dogs when the lessee is not harvesting. That was in there before, and I know that has been utilized. So that's in there still, in case anybody's wondering. It's still in the lease. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone is here to speak on this topic, that they'd approach the microphone. See none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion or questions? Councilman Dabour?
Matt, is there a termination date built in here? Or if there's not, what triggers termination or reconsideration at some point in the future?
Well, it's an annual lease. But I built in the automatic renewal, so we don't have to do this. Doesn't have to come in front of council every year, since it essentially been a renewal. But no, there is no, it basically would cease when somebody purchases the property or we decide that we no longer want to allow him to hay the land.
Right, but my point is, I'd decide out of mind, how are we, what's our mechanism for knowing that this is even occurring? I mean, we're going to have a different body of people in the future, different staff, different mayor, different council. Who's going to remember that we have these tracts of land that are being hayed, and there's no trigger system, and there's no, no termination date?
How have we remembered? How did you know to bring this up?
Chris called me.
It, it seems like there should be some type of a termination date in there that that would, would automatically trigger it. To have it an open-ended one seems
Can we have this as a consent agenda item?
Well, it is, it is an annual lease, so it's a one-year lease that automatically renews. So the termination date is a year from now, just an automatic renewal. But frankly, I would have not known about this unless Chris called.
I know we've had other leases similar to this, where they're an automatic renewal, but am I correct in recalling that we had some kind of obligation on one or both parties to continue the renewal? But I don't, but we don't see it every year, and I know what Mike's saying, but I think, I also understand the idea of the automatic renewal, but is there an automatic renewal unless, is what I'm asking? Automatic renewal unless?
Well, essentially, you know, with this type of a situation, he's not paying us money, he's giving us a third of the hay that goes to Bramble Park Zoo. I wrote, I wrote this, or I modified it, I guess, with the thought that until somebody has another use for that property, do we have any reason to tell him to stop haying it? That was my thought. If you disagree, I can certainly redraft it.
Councilman Bueller?
I, I agree with Mike. I think for future councils, for folks down the road, I think that they need to be exposed to this somehow. And I think that would make it a good item, if we did it on the consent agenda. That way, we all have access to it, we all see it. If you're looking through your, your agenda items before the meeting, you would, would know. And you could look at the supporting documentation, so.
So you're asking him to change the wording, where it isn't an automatic renewal?
That's my thought. Because I think Mike's right. I think that down the road, you know, folks are going to need to see this. They need to know that that's going on.
Councilman Billhauer?
Can we move that to a consent agenda item tonight? We can't do that anymore, so do we have to not take action on this tonight then? I agree, too, there's too many, we've had this conversation with, you know, with, within different meetings, that there's too many little things like this that slip through the cracks. And this is not a big deal, but it's, and it's something that we should have some way of monitoring on an ongoing basis so that we know it's in existence. So I think, too, it's something we should be taking action on a regular basis.
Councilman Roby?
All good points. I'm okay with the auto-renewal, just so, because what happens if it's not an auto-renewal? Then there's no lease in place. Then both parties are exposed. But the point's well taken. We do need a tickler that says, hey, an auto-renewal's coming up if you want to take action to terminate. Lesor has the right to do that. The other point I was going to make is, I don't see an option for the lessee to terminate in here, and that's fine with me, but I didn't see that option.
Under two, both parties have the right to terminate with 30 days.
Councilman Y?
Matt, I think we have an agreement with whoever takes care of the airport, too. And I think maybe there's some monies exchanged there, but is that an auto-renewal or is that a yearly? And you might not know, because you probably weren't here at that time, but we do have, where they hay the airport, but there is monies exchanged there.
I know, this is, it's been a, I don't know how the Finance Department keeps track of this kind of stuff. I know the Engineering Department and the Building Services Departments struggle with these type of items where we don't, we don't have anything to remind us that action needs to be taken. We've been struggling with that. So it's, it's a good point. I don't know how we've remembered to put these on the agenda. Kristen, is that something the Finance Department does?
Yeah, it's a little bit of multiple things. We do have a spreadsheet, and we've continued to build on it that keeps track of all of our stuff that comes due and what is due during certain months, when there's dollars that need to be collected. The other thing that, when I'm putting together agendas, I do go back through all of our previous agendas, because there are things that kind of happen every year, and that's kind of a trigger, too, to, to make sure some of these are taken care of, so.
Well, we have a motion already on the floor for approval, so if you want to carry that one out and see if it passes or fails, then, or we can ask for it to be changed?
Well, I mean, we could change it to a set term, but then, that's still, the larger question is, how do we keep track of this stuff? Whether it's auto-renewal, set term, it's still, if this was a one-year term, which it was, I still didn't know about it until Chris called me. So the question of whether we know it's going to renew or not is a larger question. But this could be changed to a set two- or three- or four-year term. I just suggest that we do it more than one year at a time, because this is, this is kind of an ongoing thing. But that being said, if we do change this, there will need to be another resolution of intent to enter into a lease, and then it'll be another month out before we can authorize this lease. So just think, keep that in mind.
Okay. Further discussion? Yeah, we do have a motion.
So, with, without the approval tonight, if we add, for example, a five-year term, I'll just use that as an example, without the approval tonight, he can no longer hay for the time being, until we bring this back? Or is it okay for him to keep haying unless we? I mean, can you backdate a lease? I, I'm just, I guess, I want him to be able to keep doing what he's doing, because I'm just, I guess, I want him to be able to keep doing what he's doing because the zoo needs the hay and the place needs to be hayed, you know what I'm saying? I don't want it to just sit up there growing grass long. I don't know if I'm making myself clear or not.
Councilman Roby?
I want to reiterate, in this case, an auto-renewal is okay. We're not talking about $100,000 a month on a lease like this. Because if you don't have the auto-renewal and it does get forgotten, then there's no lease in place. Then the guy's on our land with no contract in place, and that may not be good. Well, you just got to be somehow put a reminder in the calendar and put it on perpetual reminder that we have to do this, and I think that's the way we should go.
Yeah, and we can put it on the consent agenda as just this is automatically renewing. Maybe with the, it says, what is it, 30-day prior? So a little more than 30-day prior if you don't want this to auto-renew. Now's the time to change it. We'll put that on the council consent agenda. Councilman Alverson?
We just need to make sure we approve it tonight because he has to move forward. And we can work on the details tomorrow for next year, for this year.
Yep.
We need to move forward on it so he can get his job done.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 10 is the second reading of ordinance number 18-12, amending Title 21, adding chapter 21.15, R1C Compact Single Family Residential District. And tonight we'll have a public hearing, and I will first look for a motion, second for approval, and then we'll open it up. Moved by Councilwoman Manti. Second by Councilwoman Lalum. And Brandy's here to talk about this.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the new zoning district that we've been working on through the Mayor's Affordable Housing Committee as well as the Plan Commission. And we've come up in presenting to you the R1C. Previously, we referred to it as R1A. So it'll be the R1C Compact Single Family Residential District. And then some of the points that this district will allow is it can be 5,000 square feet as the minimum lot widths, 50-foot minimum lot width for frontage, six-foot minimum side yards on one side and nine-foot on the other, 55% minimum lot coverage to alleviate drainage issues. There will be shared walls, will be allowed between lot lines as well, or as long as each home has sufficient 50 feet of lot frontage. And then a 12-foot maximum driveway width will be, or is required, but it can be larger as long as there's 20 feet of contiguous curb frontage for, reserved for on-street parking.
All right, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has come to speak about this? It's your chance. See, no one. I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any input or questions? Councilman Danforth?
Brandy, on your first point of what it consists of, aren't you really referring to the 5,000 total area? Square feet or total area or not width?
Right, yeah.
The way it's reading, on or no?
Oh, okay.
Go back.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's a
Should be total area.
Total cover, yeah, I mean, area, lot area.
Just for the record, that...
That's right, yep.
Thank you.
My bad.
You look at it so many times.
And then, yeah, it's right there, the first point.
Councilman Lalum?
Brandy, are we looking at doing this as spot zoning in certain areas? Or are we going to have like a certain area of the community that goes to R1C or new areas? What are we looking at putting this at?
That will be kind of up to the community and just developers in general, what they plan on doing. We do have that, it can't be necessarily a spot zone because you have to have a minimum of a half a block. And that's included, kind of a depiction of what that area would look like. Is that the minimum area requirements to rezon to R1C Compact Single Family Residential is one-half of block.
Okay, because I have some people that are probably going to be like, can we just put this one lot that I have?
Right, it has to be half a block.
Okay.
And by half a block, it doesn't, it means all the way from one street to the next. And if there's an alley up to that point, or otherwise to the back of the lots.
Okay.
And there is a drawing that will be part of the code, right, Brandy?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yeah, right, right there. That's what a half a block looks like, so. Councilman Danforth?
Not having been part of the discussion, but how will, you know, we got our normal transitional areas that we have as we move from commercial to residential, typically it's R1 into R2 into... How will this work in that transitional guideline? Call it, I know it's not a strict adherence, but we have a guideline that we typically use for organized development. How will this fit into that?
I would say that, well, since we're still calling it R1, so single-family, that it could be a transition between R1 and then R1C. And then we could go into R2 and then R3, C2, C3, and that way.
It could be adjacent to higher-density residential, but it probably shouldn't be adjacent to other higher zones. It's an R1 zone, so it would be treated like any other R1, single-family residential zone. We generally don't put those next to industrial zones or commercial zones without a buffer. So it's low-density, it's just smaller lots. And the lots are limited, the buildings' sizes are limited on these lots where they aren't on other R1 lots. So that's the main difference. Councilman Buehler?
Question, Brandy. Do we, in the master plan, the city master plan, do we have any intention or idea as to where we would position this type of zoning? In a certain block, an area? Is this something we're going to integrate anywhere? Is it going to mix right in with R1? What's the, what are your intentions, I guess?
Since this was, this zoning wasn't included with our comp plan, but I could see this being integrated into older neighborhoods that have these smaller lots already and kind of want to take a whole redevelopment of a neighborhood existing, or that new developments would use this as a transition or just another option for kind of how they structure their development.
We already have lots this size in our community, but you can't create new ones until this is passed. And right now, the minimum lot size is 9,000 square feet. Many communities, that's twice as big as their minimum lot size, which makes it expensive to... You see, you have the same length of road, and you can put far fewer lots adjacent to it because of our large lot requirement. Our minimum lot requirement right now is 75 feet of width and 9,000 square feet. So this is not 75, but 50 feet of frontage, and not 9,000, but 5,000 square feet. Again, we have a lot of lots like this, but they're not allowed to be created anymore. That's something we've done in the past. And this changes that, allows people to put more lots. But anytime you zone any property, whether you're rezoning or attaching a brand-new zone on land that's just been annexed, there's always a public hearing. And the council, that goes through both the Plan Commission and the City Council for public hearings at both bodies. So this will be the same. So if anyone thinks it's inappropriate to have smaller lots in a particular area, there's an opportunity to talk about it. Councilman Villahauer?
I know it's been alluded to, and it's spelled out in our council packet, for those that are coming and knew this conversation or that might be watching. Explain briefly the genesis of where this idea came from, if you would.
Okay, well, this is something I talked about when I ran for mayor. Having worked in other communities and lived in other communities, I've seen much smaller lot sizes available as a plating tool elsewhere, but not in Watertown. Our minimums were great in relation to other communities, which makes it expensive. So this was meant to be affordable housing. It's a tool that you don't have to use. You don't have to plat a small lot like this. You can plat much greater-sized lots if that's what you're wanting to go for in your neighborhood that you're designing. But this is a tool we didn't have before, that now we will have if this is passed. So it greatly reduces the per-lot cost of development for the infrastructure that's required. When you cut the frontage requirement along a road from 75 feet to 50 feet, you are allowing half again as many lots to share the cost of that infrastructure. So it makes it less expensive to develop. That's the point. And it isn't going to be right in every neighborhood. And developers have the option of putting larger lots in if they want larger lots, and they've always had that option. They just have not had this option since we've had zoning in 1980. Our first zoning code did away with this. And so all of those, we have 25-foot lots in our community, and 50, and 35, and 40. They're, they're all legal if they were platted and recorded, and they were. But we just don't allow new lots to be created in that size anymore, so this is opening it up. It's just a tool, and, but it is another tool that developers have to reduce the cost of development. So the Affordable Housing Committee was very strongly in favor of this, and I think the Plan Commission was too. Any other comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 14 is Standing Council Policies, Resolution Number 13-17, for information purposes only, and I'll let Kristen talk about this. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Brandy's sitting there waiting. I'll step back.
I didn't know what happened, so.
We'll go back to item number 13, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 18-13, Amending Chapter 21.32.03 and Chapter 21.90, Allowing by Conditional Use and Defining Commercial Recreational Uses Within the I-1 Light Industrial District. So this has been through the Plan Commission and had its first reading last time. I'll look for a motion for approval, and then we'll open the public hearing. Moved by Councilwoman Villahauer? Second by Councilwoman Manti. Okay, Brandy.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we talked the last council meeting, this was brought forward after there was a request to allow gyms within the contractor shops in the light industrial district. So as you can see there, that the, that the commercial recreational facility would be added as a conditional use, and then that we would be defining that as a place designed and equipped for the conduct of sports, leisure-time activities, and other customary unusual recreational activities, either active or passive, and operated as a business and open to the public 14 years of age and older. And then also, we discussed at the first reading about the daycare facility, non-residential, and how Plan Commission had requested that that be removed completely from the ordinance and not allowable at all within the light industrial district. And then, per your request, then, that we would add that as a conditional use so that that request would still go in front of the Board of Adjustment, and it would be left in there as a tool if a manufacturer, company, or any business would like to utilize that.
All right, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone who is here to speak about this issue? See, none, I will close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions? Or Councilman Danforth?
Brandy, what triggers this? Then a building permit? That what triggers the
If they
the application for and consideration of a conditional use?
They would go forward to the Board of Adjustment, and that would it would most likely be at the time if they were coming in for a building permit, or just that they knew that they had to be registered. Otherwise, they get caught and have to come into the Board of Adjustment so that they're conforming and legal.
Because we have activity, we don't monitor which businesses go into which buildings. You know, we don't have
Occupancy permits.
occupancy permitting, so most likely, well, certainly the owners or managers of these facilities have to know that it's required. But really, most likely, it's going to be a building permit that's going to trigger it. Most likely.
Most likely, yeah.
Councilman Villahauer?
Brandy, I don't see Chip out in the audience. Do you want to comment about, you know, Chip has weighed in as our fire marshal on this? You want to kind of summarize what his thoughts are? Because this was an issue a couple of years ago that he balked at because we were trying to expand it to the I-2 as well. Just, you want to comment about his thoughts on this change now?
Yep, so Chip was okay with this being added as a conditional use, just so then they're being reviewed. And the reason why a couple of years back, when it was being proposed as being allowed as a conditional use in the I-1 and the I-2, is he was concerned about the materials and, that are allowed in the I-2 zone. The toxic or flammable, things of that nature.
Councilman Roby?
Just for full disclosure, when that popped up a couple of years ago, I was actually a landlord for one of the companies in one of these businesses. So I pulled myself from that conversation. We have since sold that building, so now I can say something. How many businesses are going to get affected by this currently? They're going to probably have to move.
I believe just one, and that is because it has young children under the age of 14, which we didn't find appropriate, and I believe that the land, or the business owner is okay with that. And, but that we allow this be an option for people to utilize that have patrons that are over the age of 14 just so that they can get out in need of safety.
To be clear, though, that business was in violation of our zoning ordinance. It isn't that this makes it in violation.
The other question that's come up to me on this one is, when it's a standalone building, that's being treated as the same as a series of buildings? If I've got a series of all connected with common walls, that was the other question that came up, that you're treating those the same. Is that the right way to handle it?
Correct. That if, is, that's a question, if it is?
Between, you got a standalone building versus one that's part of a connected series of walls?
No matter what, if the business was wanting to utilize a commercial recreational facility in the I-1 zone, they would have to come in in front of the Board of Adjustment for a conditional use.
There is a reliance upon the people to understand that they have, it's their responsibility to understand what our regulations are. Not knowing what the regulations are isn't a valid reason to get out of having to comply with them. Just like if you didn't know what the speed limit was, you're still going to get a ticket for violating it.
A lot of the times, too, how they get caught is when Chip is doing building inspections to make sure that everybody's in compliance, and then that's when these things get triggered. And that's why the letter was sent, and this got brought up this time.
Watertown is unique in that we don't require conditional uses, permits to be issued when or at least we don't give occupancy permits for new businesses when they license into a new address. Many communities do that, and we've talked about doing that. It would require a much greater effort on the staff's part to come up to that level of enforcement. Someday, we probably will have to do that. I don't know if that day is now, but it's been discussed. Because that's how most communities catch these sort of things, is when a business changes hands, the new occupant has to get an occupancy permit. We don't require that here, so. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, now, item number 14, Standing Council Policies, and information purposes only, won't be taking action? True?
Thank you, Mayor. This truly is for information purposes only. We kind of, I bring it forward every year when it's kind of due. Just, just so you know, there's certain things that we're kind of required to do, which is to identify our newspaper and the bid openings and stuff like this. And in 2013, the resolution was established, and this resolution is enforced until it's amended, so until it's changed. But I just felt like it's good to just let you know what it says. So that's basically what it does. So that's basically what it does. It states that the public opinion is the city newspaper, who can open the bids, the finance officer does the public hearings, the notices for those, certain things that can be expended. And then as far as acknowledging raffles. So that's kind of it. If there's any questions, otherwise, no action necessary.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
What's the last one? Acknowledging raffles?
Matt might have to help too with that. But there is, it's a state law that if you are going to conduct a raffle in the city of Watertown, you need to basically go online on the finance department. There is a place for you to let it be known that you're conducting a raffle, and then it is the finance officer's duty to basically acknowledge that the raffle is taking place. So, in 30 days prior to selling tickets.
Okay. Thank you. This is very helpful. I appreciate that you brought that forward, even though we don't need action. Item number 15 is Consideration of Resolution 18-33, expressing intent to enter into a two-li, two-year airline transportation system lease agreement with Aerodynamics, Inc. for city-owned airport property. And I will look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilwoman Buehler, seconded by Councilwoman Solomon. Matt, can you explain this a little bit?
Yes, Mayor, thanks. As we all know, Aerodynamics received the, the bid again for the airport. We had a two-year lease in agreement with them that will be expiring at the end of this month. And so this is the first step, noticing our intent to enter into a lease, another two-year lease with them, which will be coming forward at the next city council meeting. Todd promised me he would be here at that meeting to discuss any of the particulars with you, if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions now? See none? I will, I did get a motion and second, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 16 is Consideration of Resolution 18-32, establishing the annual license fee for transportation network companies. And I think I'll let Matt explain this, and then I'll get a motion.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. At the previous council meeting, we, the council authorized transportation network companies to operate in this, in the, in the city of Watertown as a separate, under a separate scheme than taxi cab companies. And so that, what this will do is set the annual fee amount for transportation network companies at $500. I, I did, Assistant Chief Toomey and I did have a conversation with Lyft last week about this. It sounds like the $500 fee is in a pretty good ballpark to what other communities are charging. Sioux Falls is 1,500. Of course, they're five or six times larger than us. So that's the dollar amount we kind of settled on, and it's up to you folks to decide if that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. I will look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilwoman Y, seconded by Councilwoman Lollum. Discussion? Councilwoman Danforth?
Matt, that's one charge for like Lyft would be 500 bucks, wouldn't be for each driver, right?
Correct.
So it's just Lyft and?
Correct.
Do they pay that every year?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lollum?
Well, how does that compare to the taxi cabs fee? Currently, cabs pay $50 a year, plus each driver pays, or excuse me, $50 a year, plus $5 per driver. And then on top of that, each driver pays $50. So right now, with five or six drivers, it comes to roughly $275 or $300 total. And so by setting it at 500, I presume there's probably already more Lyft drivers in Watertown than there are taxi cab drivers. So this can be changed in the future if, if we determine we want to try to keep it on pace with what the cab companies operating at per driver. Now, another question that Councilwoman Danforth had had last time about background checks and that sort of thing, just thought I'd address that real quick. You know, we will get that monthly list of all Lyft drivers that have operated in the city in the previous month. And if we so choose, which it sounds like other communities are doing, that they will audit that list to make sure those background checks are complying with state law. So, just an FYI.
Councilwoman Roby?
Anytime we set a fee, or we have fees that we look at schedules, the question's always going to be, what's the fee for? Why are we charging the fee? And usually it's to cover our costs, so that we, we do administrative things, it doesn't, the finance office doesn't spend 10 hours in something, we get a $5 fee. Do we have any thought around that, or any recommendations on how much time it's going to take to process these, so we indeed just, I mean, we're not looking at this as a profit center, so just to cover costs?
No, I mean, upfront, we will have to develop an application, which I haven't talked to you about yet. But we will have to get an application set up, so that will take some time for sure. And so that's why the ordinance allows this to be done by resolution rather than set the annual fee permanently by ordinance. So if it turns out this is a much quicker process, we could look at, you know, we could look at those costs and see if it's not taking us much time. It might be appropriate to reduce them. But $500 is, is roughly on par with a couple of our higher-end, our higher-end licensing fees, I guess.
Councilwoman Y?
Matt, well, we have any fee or anything scheduled later for someone who drives for Lyft or Uber? Or is this the only fee or application that we'll have?
Currently, this, as it is right now, if this passes tonight, there will just be a $500 fee for the company itself. No additional fees per driver.
They won't have to register anything like that with us. It'll just show up on that monthly report that they were driving here.
Correct, yep.
Other questions or comments? See none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Item number 17 is Authorization for the Mayor to Sign an Application to Place Wastewater Treatment Facility Administration Building on the State Water Plan. And this was recommended by the committee previously, and so I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilwoman Buehler, seconded by Councilwoman Roby. Any discussion? This just puts the, the project on the state water plan, which is a necessary step if we want to get a loan to build this building in the future. And looks like we probably will want a loan, because it's expensive. So any other questions or comments? Okay, so we're, we're talking about the administration and maintenance building at the wastewater treatment plant, and it's currently just a ballpark estimate of cost in, I think it was, six, let's see, the total cost was. With the really high contingency, we're looking at $5.6 million total project cost. But that could change a lot as we move through in the design phase. We'd be eliminating this building that the pictures are showing there. It's really falling down. That's a maintenance building. They can't even use it now, because it's not safe. We'd be building in space for the maintenance function into the administration building. And administration building would be replacing a, the two-story building that we have out there now, which is a garage on the main floor, and then offices, showers, lockers, bathrooms, SCADA, that sort of thing, that building on the second floor. So it's been in the works for a while and moving ahead. This is the time to start looking at the ballpark dollar amounts for design. And we'll go into the design phase next and trim that down more accurately before we would ever apply for a loan. But we do anticipate that we would be applying for a loan from the state revolving fund in the future. Any other questions or comments? All right. Oh, go ahead.
I, I would just add to that, that Mike Berger made clear in the committee meeting that they've got an SRF loan that's coming due. It's, it'll be soon be done, so this will fit within budget, and that won't affect any of our rates. So again, we continue to have low rates in this city.
Right. Our, our rates are so low that we don't qualify for grants. We can get loans, but we usually don't get grants. If we want to raise our rates up, then we might be eligible, but nobody wants to do that, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 18 is Approval of Insurance Policies and Authorization for Payment of Premiums for General Liability, Auto Liability, and Physical Damage, Law Enforcement Liability, Buildings and Contents, Equipment Property Damage, and Equipment Breakdown, Boiler and Machinery Coverage. Information will be distributed at meeting. So I guess Kristin did that. And I'll look for a motion and second for approval of these policies. And, okay, moved by Councilwoman Lollum, seconded by Councilwoman Albertson. Kristin, you want to explain a little in more detail what it is?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is our renewal that comes every year. I'm sorry it's so short notice, but it's one of those that moves pretty fast from the time we get all of our changes in, and then South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance kind of reviews everything and then gives us our premiums. So the dollar amount, what I handed out, the total premium for the year would be $561,220.85. That includes the city and municipal utilities. So the top portion that I handed out, what I'm requesting approval on and authorization to cut a special check, because it is due by the first, is for $346,195.25. In regards to an increase, last year's premium was $326,463. So not too much of an increase, especially when you take note that we did lose our loss ratio credit due to our, our large insurance claim. So kind of when you take that into account, not, not really much of an increase. So I was pretty happy with the numbers as they came in.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Vilhauer?
Just a question. I mean, we, we've got a, a fair and amicable split with the utilities. I know a couple of years, that was kind of an issue. We've got a, we got that resolved, and we're good going forward with utilities.
We are, and I will point out, too, that our, the finance office and the municipal utilities work together to make sure we're all in agreement with the numbers and how they came in, and utilities is in agreement with their portion as well, so.
Thank you. Good point. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Albertson?
Kristin, just a point of, is this, do we have this pool? Is this a lot cheaper than if we were to try to do this locally? Or is, is that why we do a, this?
I don't know the answer to that. But we have been with them for, I think it's like, I think we're member number four. So we've pretty much been in this pool this whole time, and that's part of the reason, too, why we get the loss ratio credits and stuff like that. So I don't know. I can't answer, would there be any better? But this is who we've been with for, well, I think we just received our, that was for our work comp, but that was like 30 years with them. So this is kind of what we've been doing, so.
Other questions or comments? I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 19 is the First Reading of Ordinance Number 18-14, Amending District Boundaries by Rezoning to 18 19th Street Southeast from PUD Planned Unit Development to R3 Multi-Family Residential District. And there's no action. Brandy's here to talk about this. And I, I would like to also point out that this has an address, but there is no building on the property. There used to be, but there isn't anymore. And this is a piece of an outlot that was platted many years ago, and chunks have been taken out of that outlot through various plats, mostly to the north, I think. It's possible some to the south as well. But there, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we would ask for a plat to be required along with the zoning, which is a pretty common requirement with a zoning request, to ask that it be platted as well. And the reason is that this land locks a parcel east of it. And right now, that parcel is owned by the cemetery, but it's not being used as cemetery. This is, both of these pieces are part of that same outlot, and this is technically subdivision of land. When you take a parent parcel and break pieces off of it, they're just not doing it all at the same time. They've been doing it here and there, a little bit at a time, one lot at a time. And I'm concerned about land locking the piece to the east. You, I think that there should be some sort of easement anywhere in there to allow access to that other parcel, at the very least. So this, this has been its own parcel, not platted, but it's existed as a parcel for many years. So with that, I'll let Brandy explain a little bit more about it.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is currently, this property that's, I've highlighted up here, is zoned PUD, which is Planned Unit Development. And when this was brought to Plan Commission on June 21st, they asked that, they rezone it into R3, being that it is, they're going to be utilizing it as multi-family residential. So instead of doing the PUD where you have to have all your, it has to be very specific, and you have to have anything, any change that is to occur has to go to Plan Commission and have a public hearing, and they have to have all their plans together and approved by Plan Commission. So with that, then, they recommended that they go through the rezone and do it as multi-family residential, R3, like the adjacent properties to the north. So they're planning on doing apartment buildings. They have, they, the group that they're working with does have, they're pretty far along in their plans, and they would like to continue moving forward.
All right, any questions? Councilwoman Buehler?
Yeah, Brandy, some years ago, when we, when we actually looked at this, this property before with the PUD, there was a concern about dual access into this area. Was that discussed at all, or planned for that moving forward?
They, and Chip, again, the Fire Marshal, has weighed in on this, and the building official, Ken, has looked at it as well. And they, with Chip and fire safety, he does feel like the one-way-in, one-way-out is sufficient, because the buildings will be required to be sprinkled. But we have not, this plan that they're proposing does not show for another way out, if, or you think maybe a second? But it makes it difficult, because that's a different landowner.
They have, the, the rights are reserved on that other parcel for that purpose. It's, there's an easement there for that purpose.
Okay.
The one to the north? And, and part of it was, if there's not enough room for a turnaround on the back, how do they get out? And if there's an emergency, I, I could, I think that this was a subdivision in the past. What the developer is thinking of doing here is not a subdivision. It's just going to be one lot. And as long as the development would comply, there's, it's not a new road. Putting in a long dead-end public road went against our ordinance in the past when this came in. They were exceeding the maximum length of dead-end road, and that was part of the reason that the secondary accent, access was required. And as far as I know, there is no public road being suggested here or even considered. This is just going to be one lot, one developer, one building, or maybe multiple buildings, but one owner.
But it would be, in essence, what it would be, there would have been, and the accessing would be like a driveway.
Right.
And then going back to the buildings, correct?
Right, right. And so the, I mean, there isn't a proposal that's actively being, correct me if I'm wrong, is there a proposal right now actively being reviewed?
Not actively. They submitted it when they brought it for the PUD approval by Plan Commission, but then when they suggested we do the rezone, it's not, we're not reviewing it right now.
Okay. So the, the Fire Marshal would have to review for all of the pertinent things that he looks at, making sure a fire truck can turn around and get to all parts of the building as necessary. They have options in the building process of putting in sprinklers as opposed to doing other things. If they don't want to do sprinklers, then there has to be greater access, that sort of thing. And the, the developer has those options. And I, I think it's- think it's too early in the process to say for sure what that's going to be right now. But the, definitely zoning this R three will be far more expedient and better for the developer than PUD, where every time he wants to change his siding or add a shed, he has to come before the Plan Commission and public hearing and get a revised PUD. So nobody wants to exert that on him when the PUD really isn't appropriate for a single permitted use on a property. All right. If there are no other questions, we'll move on. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
Item number twenty is consideration of change order number two to the contract with Dunick, Inc. for the sanitary sewer replacements project number eighteen oh eight for an increase of four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this was recommended by the committee prior. Look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Councilwoman Manti, and second by Councilwoman Buehler. And Colin, will you tell us a little bit about this?
Yes. During construction during, on Fourth Street Southeast, right by McDonald's, we determined that the storm sewer was failing in some locations, so we decided to fix it before we covered it up and repaved. So that's what this cost is.
Okay. So just one of those things you don't know about until you actually get there, and got to do the work while it's exposed. So any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay. Item number twenty-one is old business, and item number A is speed limits around Lake Compesca. Brandy, can you bring that map up? I wanted to give an update on the speed limits at the lake. I've received a lot of input on possibly making changes, and the public has a lot of concern about this. I've probably had fairly equal people not wanting the speed limit reduced as people wanting the speed limit reduced, and quite a few emotional arguments for reducing the speed limit. And this is not a new thing. The emotional argument is, is it going to take a child dying before the city does the right thing? We hear that quite often, and I, it's not meant to harass the city. It's, it is heartfelt when someone says that, and of course, we don't want to get to that point. But adjusting speed limits is a very serious matter. I believe it's best to take an analytical approach before making a decision to make sure you're looking at all of the input and not just the emotional part of it. Setting a speed limit inappropriately low will be challenging to enforce because most people will ignore it if they think it's unreasonably low, and then it's hard for the police department to enforce. If it's too high, then you can't enforce when you have a need. So either one of those directions is bad. What we don't want to do is set speed limits arbitrarily based on emotion and then have it be too low, and so many people are violating it that they come to ignore the speed limit. We call that contempt for the regulation, and it spreads all throughout our community. Traffic engineers are very mindful of this human fact. We will go the speed that we think is safe. When there are obstructions and the road is narrow, we will naturally, most of us, slow down. And I learned in civil engineering school that if an item is within four feet of a roadway, people think they're going to hit it. And so they automatically slow down. You're not going to hit something that's four feet off of the pavement unless you slide off the road for some reason, but you have that perception. And so you slow down. That's traffic calming. And we use what we call the eighty-fifth percentile rating on a roadway to set a speed limit. And there's been tons and tons and tons of research on this. The eighty-fifth percentile speed is that speed at which eighty-five percent of the public travels at or below on any given roadway in free flowing conditions. So you, as a general rule, should not set a speed limit more than five miles per hour above or below the eighty-fifth percentile. So the police department took the eighty-fifth percentile in four different locations along the west side of the lake where the speed limit is forty, and they got a speed limit of forty-two, forty-two, forty, and thirty-seven. Those are all within five miles per hour of the set speed limit of forty miles per hour. And what that means is that the speed limit is appropriately set for the roadway conditions. To have a speed limit which is higher than forty or lower than forty will cause contempt for speed limits because people won't feel it's appropriate and they'll speed. And so another thing we look at is accidents, and we do not have a high rate of accidents in that stretch of roadway. We also look at the incidence of violations, and we see a disproportionately low number of violations all around the lake relating to the population that's there compared to the rest of the city. It's in the two percent as opposed to the four percent. So by all the technical measures that engineers would use to set a speed limit, we have appropriate speed limits at the lake. And I don't at all mean to belittle the argument that people think it's too fast and that we're just asking for an accident. We are going to have accidents on that road, just as we have accidents elsewhere on the road. And it isn't the only collector route where we allow driveways. We don't allow new driveways on other collectors, and that is one of the things that makes this a concern for our community, is that it's an old, old road that was built, where it was built, a long time ago, and there's really no other alternative. So there, there's a lot of traffic on it. But it isn't exceedingly high. We have those numbers, and the perception, I think, is worse than the reality in this case. So I am not inclined to make a change. I am still open, I'm always open to input from other people, but in consultation with the police chief and the police department and the street superintendent and the acting city engineer, we've talked about this at length, and we feel that the speed limits are appropriately set. But that being said, I know that the council has expressed different opinions to me. If you want to talk about that, I'm happy to entertain that at this time if anyone wants to discuss it. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah. I know, Mayor, I'd sent you an email this morning with, I took the time to drive around the lake here a couple of different times over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, I know we've got all kinds of different changing speed limits, depending on where you're at. But to me, the one area that seems to be the most concerned for me in driving around the lake is, on that would be the north-northwest side of the lake at forty miles an hour. That, that just seems, when you're driving it, it seems too fast.
And the, actually, of the four eighty-fifth percentile studies that were done along that side of the lake, that was the lowest at thirty-seven. Thirty-seven is the eighty-fifth percentile, which means the vast majority of people are driving within five miles per hour of that. So up to forty-two, and you'd get almost everybody in that, with just a few outliers. And we're finding that with the incidence of tickets as well. People do drive slower there. That's proven fact. Because the conditions warrant driving slower there, people are responding by driving slower there, considerably slower there. They're five, five miles per hour slower there than they are farther to the south. And I think when we ignore mother nature, which is what you do when you set a speed limit artificially low based upon emotion instead of facts, it's generally not a good thing. We could set that at thirty-five, but look at all the different speed limits that we have around there. It is not unreasonable for that with an eighty-fifth percentile rating of thirty-seven. It's not unreasonable that the speed limit be set at forty. Most people are, the vast majority of people are going slower than that, which is legal. It's just not legal to go faster. And most people are honoring that. So if we were to lower that to thirty-five, it would be just fine. It would still be within five miles per hour of the eighty-fifth percentile there. But then you've got another speed limit. And I hate to say this, but the vast majority of people do not go the speed that is posted on the sign. They drive the speed which feels right for the roadway. And that's human nature. And you can argue that if you want, but it just makes it harder for the police department to enforce if you set it lower. Anyone else? Councilwoman Billhauer?
Mayor, you mentioned a lot, lack of violations. Could that partially be, I mean, is that area enforced or patrolled as much as other areas in town?
Well, I think they try to patrol uniformly, and Captain McMahon is here if he wants to. Do you want to come talk, weigh in on this at all?
I can try and give my best explanation, but Mayor, I think you did a super fantastic job of giving a great engineering perspective to it with all the numbers that were involved, as well as paying attention to external environment or mother nature, as well as taking into consideration people's driving habits. I think, you know, what we see up there, the reason why those speed limits are like they are, is because over the course of many, many, many years of development, these are the numbers that were deemed to be satisfactory for those areas, you know, based on number of houses, based on lay of land, based on all the things that we see around the lake. It's not just one flat piece of land. It's, there's varying, you know, elements of land out there, everything from hills and curves to straightaways. So I think the reason why we have all these speed limits is just because of all the reasons that you mentioned. As far as enforcement, we do our best to use our resources to the best of our, to be as efficient as possible. In other words, you know, if we have complaints in town, we have complaints at the lake, we have complaints throughout the city, we try and allocate resources to the best of our abilities to make sure that, you know, areas that are high risk, low frequency, or high frequency, low risk, we try and identify those types of situations and send the resources adequately to those areas.
Thank you, Scott. Councilwoman Billhauer?
I guess I, I appreciate the analytical, the analytical approach. I was taking this, hitting us cold, or hitting me cold, as I can't really respond. I, I guess I had a different, different thought, obviously, from comments and my own personal observations, but I, like I said, I can't argue with your approach, so I guess I'll, you know, have to, you know, digest it and, you know, go from there. But did your approach, were you looking at primarily the forty mile an hour section? I mean, did you also look at the other limits around the lake too?
No, we did look, we did look all around, and the speed limit of twenty-five is pretty much as low as you would want to go on a collector route. And it is a safe speed for a residential neighborhood. Generally, that's considered a very safe speed in a community. And to go lower than that could be counterproductive because we are finding conformance with the eighty-fifth percentile on that side of the lake as well. And to post it lower than twenty-five, which I really didn't hear even from the people who were really seriously talking about this, they weren't really recommending lower speeds. They were talking about greater enforcement and putting obstructions in the roadway, that sort of thing, to, to control the speed. And I think it's appropriately set. I guess that's, that's the bottom line. Knowing what I know about how speed limits are set, I think it's appropriate. Colin?
I did have a couple of conversations with the DOT about this because they heard we were talking about it, and multiple engineers there also agree that that should have never changed. And they obviously had it before the city, and they did multiple studies at that time to determine what was appropriate, and they didn't, they didn't see a significant change from when they had it to us, and forty was always the appropriate speed limit for them as well.
Other comments? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Item B is Highway two twelve, Phase Two Enhanced Lighting Project. And I was asked to put this on the agenda for discussion, and so I did. And we have members of the H twenty twenty group here, and they might want to talk about this. The council has authorized putting, asking for an upgraded look to the lighting along the two twelve highway project that will be done in the next few years. The design has not yet been selected, so there isn't anything yet to say not to do. I mean, we do still have some flexibility, it's in that we haven't chosen any design. So Diane, if you want to, or Rob, if you want to say your name.
Sure. Rob Peterson, Diane Stiles, we're the leaders of the H two O two O project here. Over the years, we've done a lot of beautification projects with the city driven by H two O two O committees. One of them revolves around the beautification of our entryways and the two twelve in particular. And so there was a little bit of a drive from some of those committees to do what we could, to bring ideas forward, to make two twelve as beautiful as possible, especially in the light of DOT's project to change the highway coming through our city, right? So there was some push to do some, call it fancier lighting, to have, excuse me, to have an aesthetic appeal for people coming into town. I think after the committee looked at where those lights would be, and it's only approved from, I believe, Highway eighty-one to nineteenth Street in the second phase, and not in the first phase from Highway twenty to Highway eighty-one, they went back and regrouped and looked at it and said, you know, we've seen some other towns that have taken those same lights as the ones that were previously designed. I think they're called a Cobra Headlight or something like that. And they paint them black, and they dress them up a little bit, and it looks good. It looks distinctive. It looks, you know. And so I think the committee went back to, excuse me again, went back to the drawing board and said, okay, if we look at this and do something different with the Cobra Lights to paint them and make them look better and consistent from beginning to end of the project, and then step back and collectively take a comprehensive view of entry, entry points into the city, some things we can do with signage, some things we can do with lighting, some things we can do in other areas with paint. I think the committee would like to ask the council to possibly look at that again and say, maybe we don't want to do these fancy lights just in this one section. Maybe we want to pull that back and do a more comprehensive view of trying to beautify that whole stretch. So.
And I think the council was favorable in doing an upgraded standard that we haven't selected yet. But even painting a pole black is more than we're doing right now, which is nothing. We've got the bare bottom bones of what's possible. It's functional, and that's all. Even painting the poles is an upgrade from what we're currently doing and would be an improvement.
Well, I can't say that I know the details of what the committee is working on, but I do know that they have wanted to sit back and take a more comprehensive view of that whole stretch rather than focus so much money on just the one set of lamps. rather than focus so much money on just the, the one set of lamps. And I think they're talking about a significant decrease in the amount of money that they would use to do something with signage and painted lamps.
It's still an upgrade. And so the council basically said to proceed with an upgraded lighting standard with what we do to be selected still. And that would fall within there. There is going to be a cost, particularly if we get a powder coated pole as opposed to just a painted pole. A painted pole is probably more expensive in the long run. So you have to paint it every year as opposed to a powder coated pole, which is quite expensive once. And then maintains its color for much longer.
I think you have some numbers that you can share.
You gotta press your microphone.
We don't have the numbers exactly on this. What we were hoping is that the city council could pull a committee together, and if, if you're open to it, work with the committee from H two O twenty and come up with a comprehensive plan. There's kind of two advantages to pulling back and trying a different approach. One's financial, as we've already spoken about, but also the, the impact to landowners has came up several times because, because their property and then how much property and then the proposal that we had proposed last time took up. And so this would be an advantage to the landowners as well. And then we're hoping that we could tie it all together and, and really beautify the commi- or community, which was our initial purpose anyway.
Sure. And so you're, you're asking the council to not just consider poles, but also to consider like the entry, something, signage and maybe billboards?
Something more comprehensive in a plan that says, okay, rather than spending six hundred thousand dollars on fancy lighting on one phase of the highway project, maybe we should dial that into a comprehensive plan that looks at, be it powder coated poles or whatever, but if it's a standard shaped pole, it's not gonna be anywhere near six hundred thousand dollars. And we feel that you can do this whole project for a fraction of that cost.
I think so too. Councilman Roby?
Just as a point of clarification, if, if you go with some of the antique poles like Brookings did, everybody talks about Brookings did their entryway, those are only about thirty feet tall compared to the ones you're talking about are fifty feet tall. So the number of poles that would have to be installed to get the same amount of lighting, even though they're both to be LED, is significantly more. So you're talking a lot more poles if you go with the antique poles. So yes, your costs would be higher if that's the route you go.
Councilman Villahour?
Where are we at? Because I, I know I was, from the council level, I was one that was driving this initially. I, but I appreciate the, the extra effort that's gone into this. I just wanna make sure where are we at in our conversation now with the DOT as far as pulling back from what we had approved four or six weeks ago, whenever it was? Update us, Mayor, or Colin, where we're at in our conversation with the DOT?
To be pretty blunt, we're out of time. We need to have an answer to them. And they already started moving forward on the other plan, but they're not far enough to sway either way. They said we still have that opportunity to change our mind, but they need to know immediately. I don't know, they're, they're in the middle of their design, and they have to have the designs done so they can be out for review.
I think all we're saying, Glenn, is that if we've got an opportunity, the H two O two O committee would prefer to take a fraction of the money and do a comprehensive plan that actually gets the whole stretch beautiful instead of just a portion of it.
No, I, I agree completely. But I just wanna make sure that we weren't too far along in the conversation with the DOT, that what we decided here a couple of meetings ago, that we can still, still move back from that or rescind that.
I don't think we need to rescind. I could clarify that it is, I think all we said was upgraded lighting. I don't think we specified what the poles look like at all.
We went to thirty foot poles, so the number of, as Don referenced, the number of lights then.
And?
Yes, we did.
With that, I know it would be easier for the DOT and their design team to go with the standard poles. They could not give me a cost associated with powder coating as their supplier has not returned their phone call. They've called multiple times. They did say hand painting would cost roughly four to five hundred dollars per pole. And that's probably on the expensive side, but with that, you'll be doing that every year or two to maintain that look. If we do go powder coating, I was looking at the company that they supplied to me in an email. And there are three different options for the powder coating. And obviously, the higher the level you go, the more expensive. And there are different warranties associated with each powder coating system. And I'm, I didn't look too much into that yet. Just, that will be something that we have to decide if that's the route we're going.
I guess I would like to say one more thing, that we're not trying to flip flop on you guys here, but, you know, there's been plenty of public feedback on this particular issue. And as a grassroots effort that is trying to bring forward the ideas that the community wants to the City Hall, we felt like we had to come back and at least say, hey, there's a lot of pushback on this one, and we're hearing that people would like to do something a little more comprehensive and maybe a little different. So we're just trying to bring that voice forward.
It means so much to have committee members here to tell us that because the council wants to honor the community, and you represent the community, you've served on the committee. There was an overwhelming desire to upgrade the look of Highway two twelve in that visioning process that Watertown undertook.
Absolutely.
And so you're still saying we wanna do that, just maybe change it a little bit. And so we would need to rescind the previous action and, um, take, yeah, but still ask for an upgraded look.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Manti?
So I was doing some of the research as well on some of the streetlights and things. And I'm not by any means as knowledgeable as all of you, some of you are. Are, are the new lights that are going in, are we looking at LEDs now versus, okay, so even with LEDs, we still need more poles versus the lower, you know, the high poles, we still need more versus the thirty foot?
No, we don't need more higher poles. They last longer with LED, but the spacing wouldn't be greater with the new poles. That, the higher poles have fewer poles required. They're taller, each pole is more expensive, but there are fewer poles.
That, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. So if we had the color and the LED, we're, we're still, we don't need as many per linear foot or yard or whatever. So there is that opportunity still there. And I know we can do banners, and there's a lot of other things. And I know there's also some other routes where we can tie those two twelve into some of the other areas. So I, like you, appreciate the, the opportunity to do that. That was my question, nobody kinda was saying LEDs give us more lights, and a lot of communities are looking at that as not only the cost savings, but the driver safety, the...
Right, that's not an option. We're doing LED regardless of what we choose, they're putting in LED, so.
The state would cover the cost of the, of the poles. And then in this new proposal, they, they would cover all of the cost of the poles. The only part the city would have to look at is, is the painter powder coating, those choices. So it does significantly reduce the burden to the city.
We possibly have some money to do some things with entryway signage and other lighting and stuff like that. So I think a comprehensive plan is what we're looking for.
Okay.
I would just like to thank you for coming forward on this because if there's anything I heard about it is, number one, it was expensive, which it was, it was expensive. But the fact that people believe that the entire two twelve, if we were going to do this, should have been covered, and we didn't have that in the proposal. So I was sitting here talking to people, saying, I wonder what we can do to include the rest of the... And you were, you're ahead of that, and so I appreciate that. And so if it's appropriate, because I voted for it, I would make a motion to rescind that motion as being one that voted for it, and go with these folks and come back with a committee to plan it. So I would make that motion.
And I would second that, and I, again, was a supporter of that from the get-go. And still I am as hard as doing something. So I hope the motion that we're gonna rescind is still, they understand that we're still looking at some options along two twelve coupled with an overall plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Albertson and a second by Councilman Villahour. And we can still have some discussion. So Councilman Bueller?
You know, I'd like to say I think this is really a good idea. I, I'm really glad you brought this to the table tonight as regards to a more comprehensive plan throughout this whole transition. I, I think though, for, for Colin's sake and for the engineering side of this, it's a density issue. 'Cause if they're doing layout and they're trying to do design, they need to know how many and where. So that's gonna have to be, that's gonna have to be urgent, I think, for us right now.
Fifty foot poles, that's, that's the number they need to hear. Did you have something you wanted to say?
My name is Connie Swarthout. My husband and I purchased a place at the lake in two thousand and eleven and moved here permanently in two thousand and fourteen. I grew up here, my family grew up here, my grandmother, my great-grandfather. I have been to a number of the planning commission meetings in regards to the sign ordinance. And I just, I'll be brief here. I feel, I challenged all of them to actually drive two twelve from west of, east of the freeway to the other end. And they, a number of them did that and agreed. I feel strongly that what really needs to be done to make two twelve look better is obviously lights, we need lights, but is signage. And I had gone, I got into this because I went to a couple of meetings on the sign ordinance, which is only gonna be good until two twelve is done, and then it's not any good anymore. I know they, I was always gonna meet with Shane, and then there was the crossover, so I've never got a chance to meet Colin. I know the DOT is paying everybody to move their signs. I don't know how much that is. I'm curious, and maybe you can tell me or find out for me, if they're given X amount, can they use that to buy a new sign? And we get a little more consistency in the size. I lived in Maple Grove, which was relatively new at that time in the early nineties when they put in a sign ordinance. And depending on, if you're one, one thing on a lot, you get X out. If you're a Target or a Walmart, obviously you get the tall ones. And they're all built, almost all exactly the same. I would hope that perhaps our sign people here in town might see fit to do something with it. But I think that's the issue that I see. I see when you drive in and your front of Carl's, there's like ten different rotary and Casey's and all of these. It should be on one sign with everybody's on it. I mean, there's so many things, literally, and I said this to the, the planning commission, and, and I intentionally moved back here, but if I was somebody moving to South Dakota and I drove through Watertown, I wouldn't stop. I'd look, whoops, excuse me, I'd look at two twelve and I would probably just keep going. And, and especially if you look at west of Highway twenty, what they've done to those buildings out there, you have more consistent height on the signs. But I do think it's signage is really important in getting more consistency. I realize that people say this is my property and I can do what I want. That's why I'm hoping perhaps between DOT and the city and maybe the H two O committee that we can work in that respect, because that really is the big thing to me. Most of the new buildings are almost all the same. My only other complaint is they're all within the same range of color, gold, brown, tan. And the, the stone or, or brick that you're putting in front of them is also the same color. And I think in ten years, everybody's gonna go, my goodness, every building on two twelve, and many on nineteen, are all the same color. That's just my two cents worth. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Danforth?
As we look to do this, obviously the first phase, we've defined what those are gonna be. Can we still have those? Our request there changed to powder quarter, or say powder quarter for the sake of this discussion?
Yes, Shane, before he did leave, put that request into the DOT, and they're taking that under advisement. That would be a change order or an addendum, and I think they haven't figured that one quite out yet. I'm thinking that they were leaning on change order for Phase One. But do keep in mind that we did do some upgrades to the new bridge that will be on two twelve for that, the fencing that will be black, and also by the stormwater pond, by Taco John's, that will, that'll be the same fence. So it will be black, I think the, I think it'll, it'll look nice in the end on that side, so.
Be more consistent, at least have the same color. Councilman Lallem?
One of the pushbacks I got on this one is because of the amount of signs that are on there. And if we're not moving signs, or if there's not enough of them moving, and one of the arguments was, well, we got forty different designs, forty different colors. You know, we got big ones, small ones, you can't see one, one gets bigger than the other 'cause they wanna be able to see them. If we are not going to be moving them, to upgrade lights makes no sense at all. Because if you can't see the lights because you got forty signs in the way, why bother doing them?
So if the council is inclined to entertain a change to the billboard part of our sign ordinance? Say so and...
I, I would, I would say that we need to look at the sign ordinance along the highway district there and say what that can be so that we have some sort of uniformity. And that we are constantly trying to make it a better look. I mean, if we keep what we have now and all we do is move them back ten feet, then it really still doesn't affect anything. It's still not changing it to a better look.
Right, I agree.
One of the comments I was gonna make, if we decided to go with those thirty foot poles, that's gonna be the issue. Because you're gonna have so many of them, and they're gonna conflict with signs. The, the signs will block the lighting in some cases. I, my hope is that, once we get past this issue, is we can get those landowners together and let, let them have some input to it, but understand that if we're talking about a theme that runs all the way down, then everybody's gonna have to, you know, play within a certain boundary. But this, this issue, and I appreciate the, was it Connie? I appreciate her comments, 'cause I get that a lot. That highway defines our city right now, and we have a chance to change that.
All right. Anything else? We do have a motion on the floor to rescind the previous motion and move forward with an upgraded look on the color of the tall poles, fifty foot poles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, and did you wanna make another motion about looking at the billboard order?
I'd make a motion that we look at the sign ordinance along the Highway two twelve district, which I believe is the highway commercial.
When you're talking about signs, you mean the billboard?
Billboards, yes.
Yes.
I was talking, the signs are inch business.
And, and signs.
Okay, all signs, all signs.
Yes.
I would second.
They're, they're not gonna be moving anything but billboards, pretty much. The billboards are the big signs that are apart from the building. And anything attached to a building is not a billboard, anything freestanding is...
I think there's a confusion of terms. People think of billboards as those great big ones on the interstate, but a billboard is actually a definition of a type of sign.
Okay, so freestanding signs is what we're talking about.
That is my motion.
Okay.
But Mayor, isn't that already in process? Don't we have the...
We've been talking about it and wanting it, but that has come to the council before and it hasn't been changed.
But that's still currently in process, right? The sign review, okay.
But your backing of some action, I think, will be helpful to the staff. So we have a motion, and a second, motion by Councilman Lallem and a second by Councilman Y. Any other discussion?
I'm good with that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Julie?
I just had a suggestion, and I wonder if maybe there's a way with the three D mapping and everything now that you could get that stuff on so it's a visual, so everybody can see what it's gonna look like. And then when you're doing the, the fencing and things like that, before all of the decisions or final decisions are made, you can see it on, I'm a visual person, so it's nice to be able to see it. You might be able to jockey some of the sign sizes too, so that the people that reside along there in their businesses would maybe be able to see how much better it looks. I don't know if there's that option or not, but I always think if you have something to show everybody...
I know the city does not have that software, but we could probably find somebody that, that could help us with that.
Right, I wonder if someone or somebody like that that does signs perhaps? Okay, that was just a suggestion.
Yes, appreciate that. Okay, item C is the grant on, for mosquito control, looking for... We applied for the grant on April sixteenth. The mayor was authorized to sign an application for a grant for mosquito control. And the city was awarded that grant in the amount of eight thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars. control, and the city was awarded that grant in the amount of $8,655. There's no match to it. Looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement and any other documents that are necessary to carry that through. So moved. Got a motion from Councilwoman Manti and a second by Councilman Lallem. Any discussion?
Count, or Mayor?
Yes.
When, when it comes to mosquito spraying, and you probably don't know this answer, but when it comes to spraying for mosquitoes in the city, are we killing the adult mosquitoes? Are we making the, the males sterile? What, what is that spraying exactly doing?
The spray kills live mosquitoes and the purpose of it is to control West Nile. We don't spray unless the mosquitoes, which typically carry the West Nile virus, have been detected in large enough quantities. So we aren't spraying for comfort of our residents, we're spraying to keep us from getting sick from West Nile. And it's killing the adult mosquitoes. We also put larvicide in water to kill the larvae, but that's not from spray.
Right, I believe that they trap a certain amount of mosquitoes, test them for West Nile, and then use that to determine.
Well, they don't, they don't test them for West Nile, they look for the kind of mosquito which carries West Nile.
Species, yes. So people know that that's how they do it.
Yes. Right, right, there's a science to it. So, look for a motion for approval? Or did I already get that? Already got it, okay. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, is there any new business?
Mayor?
May.
I have, I'd like to bring up that Derby Downs sidewalk issue again. I'd like to see the engineering department go out and get bids on that, so that the city could pursue taking care of that stretch of sidewalk and having, letting the engineering department go and do that. I think we still have budget dollars available in the sidewalk fund, correct?
I don't know where we stand on it. Okay, and if, if you would mind, I would, I would like to hear a reason of why we're doing this one, as opposed, and are we considering doing everybody's?
No, but the city's kinda already taken ownership with that stretch of sidewalk along there typically. Well, the city already planted six trees there and we typically don't plant trees in anybody's right of way or boulevard.
That's not true. We do, we actually do plant boulevard trees all over town, in boulevards, at property owners' request and at city desire.
But don't they, don't, don't they pay for them?
In, well, they might, but.
Well, yeah, I think they do.
That's public right of way, though. I mean, that's where we put trees.
But we got a sidewalk running down the center of public right of way to a park, a city park. City vehicles drive down that sidewalk. City used to mow that property and maintain it. The landowner now maintains that property, mows it and sprays it. The city planted trees along that stretch. And I just, it, it's a unique situation and they all, they all need to be looked at individually. And I don't know if we need a motion or how we proceed with having them do that property.
Mayor, can I comment?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I agree with, with the city taking care of it. I like the idea of seeing what it is. I don't think we're setting a precedence in this case. I think it is a unique scenario. There's many, many different times, and believe me, I'm always one very concerned about precedents. I think there's enough cause in this particular case that we should take a look at. And if the numbers that were shared with us earlier this evening, which the repair of this sidewalk plus the neighboring driveway, I think it was roughly $1,200 if I remember right. You know, I think we need to take that under consideration for repair. And I'm gonna take their word and trust that what they're telling us was in fact true, without spending hours and hours trying to figure out, go through records or whatever it is. I'm gonna take what they said as true and, and assume that the city is the one that had contracted that to go in. So I support what, what John is requesting, but none of us that I'm aware of are here, at least council-wide, maybe you or John, I don't know. But when, when the decision, when that road right, where the, the right of way that was put in there, when it was decided to put a sidewalk to a park. Now, if that were to come before me today, I would question why the, the two private entities would be required to put that in. To me, that should have been part of, I understand that.
It's on the building permit.
I understand that. It gets forced on them, Mayor, is a condition.
It's a public right of way.
I understand that.
Sidewalks.
I think, I'm just telling you what my opinion is, so I'd like to share that. I honestly think that that should be part of the cost of putting the park in and the maintenance thereof, and not the homeowners that are adjacent to it. Because that's, its primary use is to get it to the park. Now, I know that's a separate issue, but if, going forward, if something like that, and I know it's an oddity, if something like that were, were to come before, I, I'm not sure I could support that, I don't think I could. I don't, I really don't care what's on the building permit. I know they agreed to it. I also know how that works sometimes when we say, look, do you each wanna put one in or you put, or do you wanna put one in and share the cost? So they feel kind of trapped into doing something. And, but certainly what I heard tonight, and I, I disagree with that type of, type of action, I really do.
Okay, we, we order sidewalks in all the time. People put sidewalks in rarely, they're not for the person there, they're for the public. And corner lots particularly have a heavy burden because they have sidewalks on two sides. Tonight, if you take some action, I hope it will be, not sure I clearly understand what you're asking, to ask the staff to gather information so, and then put it together for you to review and then take some action on whether to move forward or not. Colin?
Mayor, I would actually just add this on to our sidewalk accessibility project. We have budget in that, we came under budget by about $20,000 on that.
I know, the city has money to do this sort of thing. I just think it's a little bit careless to say we're gonna do this because it's in the public right of way and because this guy didn't want it, we made him do it. Because we require by ordinance sidewalks in every public right of way on both sides of every street, and normally people do not wanna do it. And we make them do it every day. And so, how is this different from any other request? Or are we from now on making sidewalks optional? And then if we make them do it, we'll pay for the maintenance of it.
Mayor, I would assume then, we will be putting sidewalks around the parks everywhere on city property that does not have sidewalks? You go up on Compesca Boulevard, Highland Park, every park in Watertown that is city-owned, and there's no sidewalk?
Those, in, in a lot of cases, the city acquired the land after, after it was platted, and it wasn't platted as a park. That flooded and the city acquired property in, along Compesca Boulevard. And there are other parks, the older parks, the sidewalks were required by the developer and the developer put them in before it was dedicated to the city. And our development agreements now say there are lots of parks in town where developers paid for the sidewalk, and then there are some where they didn't. And it's a big burden to the city to take it on. When you develop property, you're required by ordinance to pay for all the required improvements necessary for that to be approved. And sidewalks on both sides of every street, that's the developers, by ordinance, that's the developers' responsibility, it's part of the street. We defer it by action. Council takes action to defer it to the future property owner when a house is built. Unless there won't be a house, in that case, developers are required to do it. So, I, I just, I think you should let the staff do some research and tell you how we've done it in the past, and we can give you some examples of how it's been done. And, and look at the precedence that this might set in taking over the responsibility because this is public right of way. And that's where sidewalks belong.
I'd like to make a motion that the engineering department bring back a bid to the council for that stretch of sidewalk and for us to approve.
And we, we wouldn't, we can do that, Colin can probably do that tomorrow because we have a bid already.
Yeah, we have an active bid that, they have not started construction yet, so we would add it on to that project.
We can always add it on if you decide later, but I think before you add it on, it would be nice to gather the information and understand.
As long as it's done.
We got that driveway too, John, you know, don't, don't forget the request for the driveway.
Are you including their request for the driveway and for the curved sidewalk?
Correct.
John? Councilman Robey?
For those of you I've talked with before, sidewalks has been a thorn in my side since I've been in the council, but what is it in our process where this is continually a problem? And I think, Sarah, you kind of addressed some of it, and that is that the council has made decisions where we'll let this go for a while, knowing full and well that you may be called upon to fulfill that obligation. And Doug even asked a good question, he said, I had to pay for half a sidewalk, why doesn't anybody else have to pay for half a sidewalk? Is there something we can do in our process that puts a spotlight on this? Because it's been going on in this community for decades. Is there something we can do?
There is, and I mean, if you, the way that we have addressed this is very consistently in the last 20 years, sidewalks are required. But prior to that, even though the ordinance required them, they were waived, that requirement was waived to save money for, for homeowners as well. Developers didn't have to pay it, it was passed on to the property owners. And then property owners were inconsistently allowed not to have to put them in. Some were required to, but like the ordinance says, and others were not. And that's inconsistent. We have been fairly consistent the entire time I've worked here, like other communities, that everybody struggles with this. And we, we're trying to be consistent. But deferring the cost to the public for sidewalks is a precedent. I will tell you, we have not been doing that, we have not been doing that. This is different from the way we've been trying to be consistent so that people know upfront, sidewalk, we're following our ordinance. Our ordinance says sidewalks go in on both sides of every street with every subdivision. Now that one, that did not happen. The developer deferred and the future homeowners built their homes and did not put their sidewalks in. And in this case, I have the building permit right here in my hand, when a homeowner didn't have to put the road in next to his house, he was just required to put the sidewalk in and it says each owner responsible for half of the sidewalk, and it went down the middle of the street. Instead of having both property owners put a sidewalk all the way along their property, which is what the ordinance says, they shared one down the middle. And, and it seems ridiculous that it's there now, but it's a public facility which is required in our code for developers to pay. And we defer the cost to save money for developers, which is fine, the council can do that. But the inconsistencies are what create havoc. Councilman Billhauer?
I mean, we, we've got a bigger issue to hash out, but I, I, I do, I do agree with John's concept. So, I mean, can we get a motion and get an action on this particular topic and then take a, take a bigger, bigger look at this going forward? So let's, safe expedience tonight, let's act on the motion and, and move on.
Okay, so we have.
Yeah, what is the motion?
I, I had made a motion for the engineering department to bring back a solid bid from the engineering department.
Of cost, of what it will cost to fix it.
For that chunk of sidewalk and that driveway and bring it back to the council for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
For approval or consideration, I'm a, it's a little bit open-ended if we say for approval.
Well, for consideration, I guess.
So we have a, a motion by Solom and a second by Y. Any other discussion?
I, can I just make a, a comment? I, because this went on so long, I wanna make sure, are you talking about the sidewalk that goes up to the park at Derby Downs?
It's in, no, it's parallel to the road.
Gotcha, okay, I, because I had some history from living out there for so long, I thought I would just try to help out there.
Is, do you know something about this particular one?
Well, the park was, because there was no park out there and all the parks were so far away, the land was donated to the city to put a park in out there because there was so many young families out there and you would have to, most areas in town, there's parks that are available for children to walk to or ride their bikes. But no one could get easily to a park with their kids. And so that's when that first park went in at the top of the hill there between the two houses and down to the Derby Downs area.
And, and that's how the sidewalks are waived in the past, it's like the sidewalk to nowhere, and it is, until something goes out there like a park.
Right.
And then there's a purpose for the sidewalk.
Right, but I do know that it was, because I went to the meeting, it was the first homeowners out there, because we've been out there for 27 years, and we went to the meeting with small kids because we wanted, you know, to be able to have access to it. And so I do remember, it was just, there was nowhere for the kids to go and play that was safe, other than, you know, in front of the house or in the street or whatever.
Yeah, all right, thank you. So we have, we've already passed that, okay. Good. Is there any new business? Oh, we haven't voted. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 22 is.
No, Mayor. Mayor, Mr. Hardy did come talk, he's with the RNZ group. And I think.
So call that old business?
Old or new, I didn't, I didn't know where to bring it up, I guess, but. I think.
We, we. That was removed from the agenda. The, the bid approval for RNZ additions sewer improvements, because we hadn't enough information from you and the others that would be paying for it. And we figured just the word of one person may or may not, you know, until we hear from everybody. Yeah. Yeah. So could you please step to the microphone, please, and state your name, Fred?
And before we get too involved, I do have the updated costs for you, if you would like to see them going forward.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Fred Hardy, own property in the RNZ division. The price Colin had told me had gone up by 30% over the estimate. And I found that out today, and I just think we should have a meeting amongst the owners to find out if everybody's okay with that.
Right, and if you are okay, we can call a special council meeting to approve it, but we can't wait for the next council meeting because we have to either, we have to award the bid within 30 days of opening it, opening it. Otherwise, it's, the bid bonds have expired, so can't hold anybody to their bid.
Do we think that the bids are fair?
Well, they're high and you might get a better bid by waiting, but we can have a meeting to discuss that.
Okay.
And, and I think that we should, we're planning to.
All right.
So they, they didn't take any action, they're kinda waiting.
Okay, and I'll get a meeting put together and then get back to Colin, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any new business? Councilman Billhauer?
I guess I wouldn't be, wouldn't call it new business, but Julie, as long as you're here, I was at the, the airshow and I know, Don, you were out there too. I tell you what, I heard nothing but complimentary things said about the work that Julie and her crew and the community in general, you know, rolled out the red carpet, these barnstormers over the weekend, that they were just so impressed, the friendliness, the cooperation, the assistance. And I mean, I, so often we beat up ourselves and it's nice to hear that coming from outside sources, that hey, we're kinda hard on ourselves at times, that, that we, we can put on a good show and it was nice to those comments. I wanna express my appreciation to Julie and, and your crew and whoever else was involved, but it was nice to hear those words.
You have no idea how much hospitality just random people offered them, it was amazing. So it was, we did what we do and everybody, Watertown is very good with hospitality, so.
They did appreciate it, it was awesome.
I brought that proposal, you'd wanted me to.
You know, I, I think that would be a good idea, we've got a proposal. And I, I'm going to have a meeting, I've asked for a meeting to be arranged to talk about it.
Okay.
But we, you can, why don't you tell just a couple minutes of, of what it is?
Okay, well, not to be confused with when we had John Schmider here and he did his presentation on the sports tourism strategic plan, which is more of a visitor industry, sports tourism project that would be ongoing and would just encompass everybody, all the facilities, a more high-level thing. But when we were all here, when we were talking about the ice arena, the cost of that, et cetera, I'd spoken to John Schmider about that and he, I asked him if he had anyone he could recommend at the mayor's request to maybe take a look at some of the things that are coming along with. a look at some of the things that are coming along with the ice arena, and so, he gave me the name, um, of Eric Sullivan, who is with Sports Facilities Advisory, and the mayor and I and Glenn had a conference call with him, and, um, this company takes a very deep dive into a facility, and they have worked for many different cities, when building of facilities with millions of dollars of investment comes up. And so, I've got a copy of it here, and I know you have a copy, and maybe Jana can get that sent out to the council, um, but this is everything from taking a look at what the building costs and the building, um, structure is like, um, this is what these folks do for a living, they've not only helped people make decisions or cities make decisions, but they've run these facilities as well. So, in the deep dive, it comes right down to cost to run it, other uses, um, what the economic impact of all of those other uses are, um, he said, really, to build an indoor facility like that in a, in a city that has long winters, it makes a lot of sense to use it for more than one use, and, and these guys can pull uses out of their hat that we would've never thought of. Um, you know, even concession, um, return on investment, things like that, right down to uniform costs, wages, um, everything, and I know he showed us a spreadsheet, I think it was Appleton, Wisconsin, which is a little bigger market, but if you took it down to scale, um, it was pretty impressive, and it would be a five-year plan, and it would be everything from salaries, operations, to just buying things like toilet paper and towels and whatever. Um, so it's very, very specific, um, he had about an eight-week turnaround time, because, you know, it's, the math is kind of the same, but you just have to plug in all the personal, um, information, and so they would come and interview the stakeholders, um, I think the investment cost was around thirty-three thousand dollars, which, I guess, when you put that into, you know, an eight-point, what, seven-million-dollar facility that we're not sure we're gonna be able to use right away, um, you know, it's entirely up to you.
I think the-
My role was just to find someone that can maybe help make that decision.
Right, and I think the taxpayers deserve to have a, a realistic analysis of, uh, the cost and the economic impact of constructing an ice arena in our community, and I'm, I'm going to be looking for partnerships for, um, paying for this study, I, I think it needs to be done before we would proceed with building the ice arena, just to make sure that we're doing something we s- we can sustain in the future. And I, I think it is possible, but just thinking it's possible and, and hearing from an expert that it is feasible and it's good and right thing for our community to do is important.
There are a lot of things that we haven't thought of, just in that spreadsheet that we saw initially, but this is what these guys do for a living, and, um, they've got data, they've been doing this for many years, um, there was also some testimonials from some other clients of theirs, um, in the proposal, I also have some video, um, and I think you must, you probably got it too, of some of the clients that they have helped, and, um, they should be able to project the economic impact, and, um, you know, it's, I, I love the associations and all the tournaments they bring in, but to build something like this, you really, what he said is you need to have the visitor focus in mind, because that's where that third penny comes into, into, and we need to take into consideration how many hotel rooms we have, if we have that going on and something else going on, we don't wanna overbuild, we don't wanna underbuild, we wanna have something that we can use for many years that can draw people in, so, I've got this, the mayor also does, and maybe you can have that emailed out.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just kinda the, the person that brings everybody together, but, um, I think that, you know, he came very highly recommended, he and John work well together, and that would impact, um, you know, the, this quote for having the sports tourism element really have, you know, help us bring everything together, so it's cohesive, and we can really get in there and sell Watertown. Um, that was about the same amount of money, but I think that we've got a lot of facility, and we've got a lot of, you know, dates that aren't filled, um, and either one of these studies is going to pay us back, I mean, that's one thing about sports tourism, it does not take very long before we've recouped our costs, so, um, I will have to get on the agenda to talk about this, because I'm right knee-deep into my budget, and we'll have to decide, you know, how that's gonna go too, so, I just don't want everybody to confuse the two, so, we've got both of them, but-
Yeah.
Um, one is a little different from the other.
Yeah, all right, thanks, Julie. Is there any other new business? Any liaison member reports? Okay, we do have a need to go into executive session tonight, um, in order to consult with, um, legal counsel on employee negotiations, and we do expect to take action when we come out, so, look for a motion to go into executive session. Moved by Councilwoman Bill Howard, seconded by Councilwoman Manti. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. All right, we're in executive session.